All right, I've got six o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. We do have two additions to the agenda that will go, there are other business. A, we'll have a motion to, do you got it written up, Blaine?
Motion to approve the county authority concerning the letting of high school principal and special ed students for the 2021 school year to be amended following finalization of state funding. And the resignation is, to accept the resignation of Carrie Visser as specialized paraprofessional at the end of the school year, and thank Mrs. Visser for her service to the school district.
So with those two additions, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Conflict of interest disclosures, should be good on those. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So move.
Second.
Any questions on anything in the consent agenda?
I just had a question on the food service balance. Negative, end of April. I don't know if that was because of what we've been doing with giving free food or...
Well, and we're paying the salaries and the food. I've got a, the claim is in for the month of April for about fifteen thousand. And so it's, it'll be close at the end of the year. I fully expect it to be a negative balance, so.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve the payment of April bills?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll move to the public comments section and welcome our visitors, so welcome everyone. Do we have any comments? This is all you guys?
Yep.
All righty, I guess I am just here to get your approval to open our business back up into the dual gymnastics building. Um, I don't know if I say this or not, but I don't know if we have a written lease, written for our business to be carried out in the dual gymnastics building, but I would like to get that done so that we are separate from the, or not liable under the school's insurance or whatever. Sorry, I'm nervous because I don't really know what to say. Um, I, hmm, I guess if we were to start having classes, just like anywhere else, we would have them re-sign a waiver, have limited kids coming into the gyms, having them go in, I guess, groups throughout the day. Um, temperatures would be taken, um, hands would be washed, kids would be separated. Um, the kids that we would have there are older and responsible, that they could, you know, listen to our instructions, and we're good at stations and setting them up just to like separate them, keeping them their social distance. A lot of gyms, I guess this is where it's like hard for us as coaches and as a business owner, is that a lot of gyms have opened up this month, and then we get the, I guess, feedback from other parents like, hey, Mitchell's open, Rapid City is open, Sioux Falls is open, why isn't Clear Lake open? Like, and that's kind of hard to answer to. And then as a business owner too, you have all those kids that you've, I don't know, raised in the gym, and then, or just like anything, um, trying to answer to them and to keep their progress moving forward, so hopefully whenever this passes, that we're able to compete again in the next season, just like everyone else is trying to do. And some kids have high hopes. It's a different sport, it's a diff, I don't know, there's a lot of differences within it, like, I know there's some Sioux Falls kids that are, already have scholarships, and they're, they were like in eighth grade. So a lot of these things, like, it's not a seasonal sport, it's a year-round sport that these kids put into, and they can't just go outside and shoot a hoop, like a basket, whatever, shoot the basket, play their sports out in their yard, like, they need equipment, they need training, they need a facility to go to, they need coaches. And before this, we always said, don't do gymnastics at home. And now it's like, do it at home, I guess. But they just learn bad habits and safety issues, like gymnastics is a huge safety sport, like you have to, like I carry my own insurance. Um, we operate under USA Gymnastics, so we're not affiliated with South Dakota High School Activities Association. Um, and we get daily emails from USA Gymnastics about protocols and what they're doing and what they want us to do, and suggestions to keep kids healthy and to get the kids that have dedicated their lives back into the gym so that they don't lose everything. I mean, if you don't use it, you lose it, like especially in gymnastics, like it's such a strength sport, and when they're not going, it's hard for them to, you know, keep going and then be competitive if that's something they want to do. Um, I guess that's, like, we had the same rules, like no water bottles, no snacks. Usually our practices are long, so they'd be eating snacks, we're trying to get, keep their hands away from their mouths, like washing hands between events and rotations, um, taking all necessary precautions to keep them safe, like no parents in the gym, they just drop their kids off, they leave, try not to have groups overlap, do as much as we can to keep the kids safe. And that's like a number one priority too, um, is to keep them safe and to keep us safe. And I'm having a baby, so obviously I don't want to, you know, like, get sick, so I think about those things too and not just the kids, but, um, I don't know, I'd like you to take that in con, to consideration because, like, it is our business, like, these kids, this is their livelihood too, and I just don't know what to do if I don't have a place to run my business. Um, then I guess unfortunately we'd have to look at different options to take the girls and find them a place to practice. But, I don't know.
Thanks, Caitlin. You're good.
Okay.
Um, I think we're going to discuss that when we get to Mr. Schirnbeck's report. So are you guys good sticking around a little bit? If we have any questions? Does that work? Okay, so when we get to Mr. Schirnbeck's report, we'll, we'll have some discussion on that. Anybody else have any comments? Questions? Okay. Uh, go through recognitions. Uh, do you guys have anything? Not a whole lot going on, huh? Okay. Sounds good. We'll move to transactions of official business. Uh, need a motion to accept the resignation of Eric Bass as high school principal at the end of the 2019-2020 school year, and thank Dr. Bass for his service to this dual school district. So move.
Second.
I'm passing around here now the resignations of Eric and JoJo and obviously his wife, Renee, so I want to thank all three of them for their service. Eric's left a personal position and a, like a position for the next person coming in, so I appreciate that.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to accept the resignation of Joanna Dollman, a special education teacher at the end of the 2019-2020 school year, and thank Mrs. Dollman for her service to the dual school district.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to accept the resignation of DeDe Bass as elementary teacher at the end of the 2019-2020 school year, and thank Mrs. Bass for her service to the dual school district.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the quote of...
Okay. If you have a question, the audit board, any...
Copy of the audit quotes and the copier proposals. I guess my recommendation would be Grant Williams on the audit. Uh, she is a little cheaper, um, but she does charge for...
Let's get the motion in second.
Okay.
First, so let's put that in there. Motion to approve the quote of Grant Williams, Inc. to perform the fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one fiscal audit.
Motion.
Second.
All right, go ahead, Blaine.
Okay. Um, I sent out a request for quotes, and I received the three quotes listed on there from I. Bailey, William Neal, and Grant Williams. Grant Williams has been doing our audit for the last number of years. Uh, William Neal does the Northeast Ed audits and several others around the area. Um, and to be honest, I have no problem with, with any of those audit firms, uh, doing the audit. Grant Williams is a, is a little bit cheaper, um, but they end up, um, by the time you put the expenses on and, and some of the work with the Gatsby, they do charge a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour for that. Um, so I guess if you want to go back and change to William Neal, uh, I get, personal feeling, I. Bailey is, uh, with their quotes are considerably higher. Um, but Grant Williams has been doing our audits and they go fairly quickly. Uh, one of the understandings with that is she's going to have to have the audit done faster. Um, she is just finishing up our, um, the audit report at this point. Uh, we're almost a year out, so, um, and I have had that talk that we would need to have the audit done by January.
Do you have any idea on timeframe? I mean, you know, I, yeah, there is quite a bit of difference per hour. I mean, I, total bill-wise, any idea what, I mean, I, Grant Williams is going to be that much more efficient because they, they've done our audit previously, is there any idea?
Um, yeah, actually, that's part of, that's part of the quote. Uh, I. Bailey is planning on a hundred and twenty hours, uh, William Neal, a hundred and sixty hours, and Grant Williams is ninety-two hours plus about fifty hours for, um, putting the financial statements together.
Is that at a different rate, or is that falling under the one thirty-five?
Um, normally she does bill for some of that, the one thirty-five.
Some of the fifty?
She's done them for at least six years, if not eight.
Do you have any history with this other company, William Neal?
William Neal, uh, they do the Northeast Ed audits, um, and I get a copy of those every year also, so, um, and like I say, he's a very reputable firm and, and does a lot of audits in the area also. He's out of Watertown.
Do you know the not to exceed? I mean, if she, okay, so ninety-two hours, that one thirty-five, that's twelve, four twenty, and then I just figured half of the fifty at the same rate is about thirty-three, seventy-five, so it puts us over fifteen, and they're capping at thirteen, seven, so would that cap stop then at the...
The cap is for the audit itself, the extra would be for, uh, putting the financials together.
Okay. So the Gatsby, is that the financials you're talking about, or is it something separate?
Um, that's all of the financial reports for the new requirements, uh, and they keep adding Gatsby, um, requirements about every two to three years. Uh, we're supposed to have another one coming out on leases this year, but I've already heard that that's been postponed for a year. Last year, I think, Aileen's, well, uh, Grant Williams' total audit bill ended up about eighteen thousand.
Does William Neal seem a little bit more timely with the, with these head stuff?
Northeast Ed usually has theirs out, oh, October, November for their audit report. Um, Grant Williams had, uh, one of their people that quit their office this year that kind of backed them up, so.
I guess I'm fine either way. Um, maybe it is time for a switch. She's gotten complacent, I don't, it really doesn't matter to me, it's kind of your comfort level, I guess.
So, so fourteen versus eighteen is what we're looking at, really, then?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be something like that.
Okay. Oh, that's substantial, then.
Yeah.
Yep.
And it sounds like it might be a quicker turnaround.
Yeah. Um, Jackson Wade, all right to change that to William Neal?
Yep.
Okay.
That's fine to do it that way? We don't have to vote it down first and then change it?
No, I think we can do it that.
So the motion will now say William Neal and company?
Yep, motion to approve the quote of William Neal.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve the RFP of...
A and B Business.
Okay, A and B Business for a four-year copy management plan for four copy machines.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Blaine.
Okay, I sent out an RFP, um, for copy machines, had four of them that came back. Century Business Products had a couple of issues with theirs. Uh, they had a, had a good price on theirs, the only thing is they did not meet the spec that we had for the, um, black and white machines. We wanted six, at least sixty-five, and they're at sixty, so it's not a real big deal. Um, everybody else quoted forty-five copy per minute color machines, and, um, theirs is at forty. The only other thing is, our specifications ask for a, uh, set price per month throughout the term of the lease. The, uh, Century Business Products, uh, actually had their price, plus we paid for the copies each month. Um, so about the only way I could do that was figure an annual price if we use the total bit, uh, total number of copies, and, and we use, the specs called for eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand copies, black and white, and seventy-five-thousand copies color per year. And, uh, so if you figured it using all those copies, Century was, um, the cheapest one, um, but they just don't quite meet the specs or the, the process that we asked for. A and B was the next lowest in, in elite business products. Uh, we previously had A and B Business with the Toshiba machines, had pretty good luck, excellent service out of them, so, um, this last time around, we had Xerox through Valley Office, and, uh, it's pretty much a hate relationship with, with the machines. Uh, all in all, we didn't have a lot of problems with them, a lot of times it was operator error more than anything, but, um, but their price just came in, um, considerably higher. I've talked to three of these four today, and of course, they all said that, well, we could do a better job on our pricing if you give us a little bit of time. I'm not doing that, we, we had a deadline set on it, so, um, so my recommendation is A and B, and, uh, there again, this is for a four-year lease.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve, disapprove the proposed South Dakota High School Activities Association constitution and bylaws change regarding the number of team practices prior to an athletic contest.
Motion.
Second.
This particular amendment just changes the wording, which forever has been ten days, you had to have ten, ten team practices before, uh, your first contest. Uh, I think with the COVID and all of these other things, and, um, things changing in regards to where schedules are being put, there's not as much emphasis on it, and if you read through it, uh, it's been something that coaches have, have been screaming for for a long time, and I think the simple fact that you can practice year-round now, and, and they've, they've lightened the, the restrictions in regards to practicing over the summer, summertime, um, it's kind of a no-brainer, so I would, uh, I would recommend voting yes on that particular amendment.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to cast dual school districts vote for Marty Wiseman, head of Groton Area School as a small group board of education representative to the South Dakota High School Activities Association Board of Control.
So move.
Second.
As you can see, he is the only candidate, so he will be filling that position. Um, I do know Marty, um, so do some of the other guys, probably know him as a basketball official or football official, so, um, he's been, he's been on the Groton School Board for, for quite some time, so.
That's all I know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to cast, cast dual school districts vote for, do you have a name you want to put in there?
Jeff Cosers.
Jeff Cosers of...
Frederick.
As the East River at-large representative of the South Dakota High School Activities Association Board of Control.
Motion.
Second.
I actually know all four of these superintendents, um, of the four, I probably know Jeff the best, and he's probably, probably, he's, I shouldn't say he's the most level-headed, but I know him well enough that he would, he would do a good job at this, and he's got a lot of history, so, uh, I think they would all do a good job, but my vote would be for, uh, Jeff.
What were the other names?
Uh, Tom Culver, Kelly Glot, Gloat, uh, excuse me, and Heath Larson, Chester.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to cast dual school districts vote for, you got one to put in there, Chad?
Michael Tally. Of Rapid City.
As a Division One representative of South Dakota High School Activities Association Board of Control.
Second.
I will be quite honest with you, I know these two gentlemen as much as you do after reading their bios, so, uh, I guess the only, the only thing I'm looking at here, they both come from big schools, um, one's from Sioux Falls, one's from Rapid City, but I know one of the two, obviously, um, Michael Tally grew up in a small, small community, so I think he's got that background and experience, uh, that he would bring to the board, maybe see a little bit bigger picture.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move to reports and discussion. We'll start with Mr. Schirnbeck.
Okay, you should have, don't look at your board packet for this, because I added a couple things that transpired from Thursday all the way till, till noon today that I'm going to talk about, so I gave you a separate handout, um, that you should have my board report on. Uh, first thing I have on here is, is policy review. Uh, I know we haven't, I haven't done a whole lot with this for quite some time, I've got some policies in the work that I got from a workshop this fall, um, but I still need to finish the crosswalk for that. Uh, my plan is to implement some more policies, um, take a look at those, uh, through the summer months, um, and, and start throwing them your way. I know Melody, you're not versed in it, um, uh, and I think I can sit down with you and explain the process, but what we do is I will go through and format a policy, and I can send it in a PDF format to the board. You'll have a chance to look at it before the board meeting, and then during the board meeting, we can talk about the specific policy, and then, um, either amend it at the board or pass it or table it. So, uh, there'll be more information coming on that, I'll send you a login, uh, for that. Uh, superintendent job description, I know we talked about this a couple of months ago, um, to be quite honest, I've got a number of examples, um, and was planning on doing that, but I think we jumped right into the COVID thing, and it kind of got put on the back burner, so I will bring a, a job description to the, next to the June board meeting that we can look at, and I'll get that sent to you prior, using that avenue, prior to the June board meeting. Uh, strategic planning, uh, another thing that we've put on the back burner since the COVID. Uh, I know we're going to have a change here coming in June, or excuse me, in July with the new board. Um, I'm open to anything, I know it's something that, that, that the board has, has wanted to take a look at and dive into, um, and I think we could do it with social distancing, similar to probably what we have here with Jim, and I, I know he would certainly come, um, at any point in time, so, um, I'm open for any, any ideas that, that you guys have, if this is something that you would want to do prior to having a new board member, or wait until after the board member, it, it really makes no difference to me.
Or is Jim out on dates? I think...
I, I haven't contacted, I have, I can check on that.
Okay. I mean, it might be worth looking at his calendar, at least to see what, he's kind of open, I guess.
And I have no idea right now, I know it is, obviously, a school near as August is going to be busy for him with the joint convention, in the event that we have the joint convention, so, um, if he does have open dates, I would rather get those and shoot them to you guys and, and have some dialogue that way, if that's all right with you guys.
Yeah.
Do you have any, is it, any preference on timing, before or after the new board?
Probably makes sense, like the end of July.
Okay.
Yeah, after.
Yep.
I will call him tomorrow and, and try to get something penciled in, or some possible dates, I'll shoot to you guys and get some feedback.
Sounds good.
Uh, the gymnastics, I've, I've kept the board abreast on everything, um, as, as I have with Kate, and I know we were going back and forth over email, and I, I got some legal advice on, on maybe what we should do, um, just to give you a little history, and it's, I understand Caitlin's, Caitlin's position completely, and I always have, um, and by no means do I, I, I want you to feel that we're sliding the gymnastics program or, I, by no means... And by no means do I, I want you to feel that we're sliding the gymnastics program or, by no means, I don't think anybody in here wants to see you move your business. We see the value of it for the program and the community and everything. It's a good thing, it's a good thing for our kids. I guess since day one, my biggest rationale or reasoning for shutting that down was number one, it's our facility. Okay? Number two, but it's a different scenario that it's being leased or what we thought was being leased, had a written lease. Some different dynamic there. My biggest concern was, okay, we open up, whether it had been a month ago or tomorrow, that, okay, worst-case scenario, we have a student come in, a kid come in, they get COVID-19 or bring it in and possibly there's a death from it. And does that hold the district liable? Assuming that it was our building, I felt that it was in our best interest and to shut it down and avoid that in the event that that could come to fruition. I did seek legal counsel. He was very quick, our school attorney was very quick to say that it depends on the lease. If you are leasing that particular building to her, she can do what she wants with it. And I also expressed those same reasons to him about the school being liable. And he was very clear that it's dependent on that lease. And ultimately, you talked about a waiver for parents. Ultimately, it's the parent's decision, knowing what's going on right now with this entire pandemic, that there is a possibility they could be putting their kid at risk. That's a parent decision. So knowing that, I shared that with Caitlin. Blaine and I looked high and low for a written lease between Caitlin and the district. We didn't have anything. We had the original gymnastics corporation lease when the building was constructed, which basically is null and void now because we made our last payment on it, the building became ours. And then we also had a lease from Dakota Gold out of Watertown, which at that time fell through, so the lease was the same thing, nothing. We couldn't find anything, thinking there was something. I had contacted Dean, Dean Christensen, he thought there was something. I contacted Caitlin and she didn't have any contract or lease either. So it was done with a gentleman's agreement, probably a handshake at the time. Hey, you were probably there too and I can't remember if I was there or not. But we don't have a paper trail. So after talking to our school attorney, I have no reservations whatsoever. If we could generate a lease, expedite that process, get an attorney to write the lease, we can sit down with Caitlin, figure out the details and she can get back on her feet with her business as soon as possible. I personally don't feel comfortable writing a lease. I don't know if Blaine feels comfortable. So I would seek, whether it be our school attorney or an attorney here in the community to do that. That is my recommendation.
Does that take board action tonight? Or can you just do it?
I don't think it takes board action. I think the lease would cover the agreement between County Twisters and the district.
I'm good with that. Get a lease going so she can do her thing.
Yep.
I guess I have a question for Caitlin. You maybe mentioned it, do you carry liability insurance? You've got all the coverage on injuries and everything that way outside of the COVID?
Outside of the unknown.
Right, yeah.
So if you as a board are comfortable with that, I will reach out tomorrow. And I will keep in touch with you, Caitlin, and we'll get going on it. Any other questions for Caitlin or myself or anything? Notification system, I found this out, well, I've known it for quite some time and it's a great system. We have our current system right now through ITC. It's a good system, but I am solely limited on the number of characters that I can send out in a text message on that. And I don't have, I've checked with ITC and I have no way of expanding that. And if you've seen the stuff, I'll be honest with you, Facebook's probably been the best medium for me. And I've had to put some very lengthy notices on there that I simply was not able to put on there. And I think that probably had a better chance of maybe reaching more people than anything. But I know Blaine and I sat in on a notification system that Infinite Campus has and we're probably going to be looking at replacing that. It's going to be more of a uniform notification system that's not limited. It's got the email text option as well as the phone call option too. So again, nothing against ITC whatsoever. It's just, it ties me in what I can get out by limiting the characters. So. Job openings right now, we finished up the principal position on Friday. I've got two openings right now. I've got the first grade position that I have open until the 19th. And then I have an elementary special ed position that's open, excuse me, that one's open till the 18th. First grade's open till the 19th. And I've been receiving some applications for those two things as well. In Carrie Visser, this was kind of a surprise this morning, her resigning. As we get closer to the school year, I will advertise for that. The next thing I have, I had a visit, Todd and I had a visit today from Mr. Daley, who had talked to us about, Jim Daley, who had talked to us about scholarships this winter. He is trying to compose a similar package for the district where we could get some extra help or extra money to use towards. And talking to him, hopefully to get some more general ed paras from, obviously from the community. But he would be looking at generating money from the wind companies and maybe some of the suppliers, those that are benefiting from it, to get some money to the school that we could use and turn around and get some extra help for kiddos. We know right now with missing probably a quarter of the school year, we're going to have some kids that are behind. We know that going into next year. Our teachers right now have always, they always want extra help. They want extra help from paras, but our paras are solely tied to our special education program and our special education students. So if you're talking about a kid getting extra help, that may not qualify for special education, but they struggle, they're bound to that classroom teacher. And I'm not saying our classroom teachers aren't providing that help for them, but I know they would invite any help that they can get. I know we're always looking for volunteers to come in, do some one-on-one lessons, math, reading, and get some of those kids up to speed. And when I'm talking about general ed paras, I'm talking about the primary grades. I'm talking about our kindergarten, first, second, maybe third. So he was talking to the tune of maybe over a hundred thousand dollars. And I throw that out loosely because it's really, it's not my baby. But at the same time, he requested from the school that we write up basically a proposal as to how we would use the money, which I have absolutely no problem doing whatsoever. I can use a lot of the stuff that, as far as the COVID stuff, the retention stuff that I just talked about, you and maybe some of our kids that didn't have wireless here this spring, there's definitely a need for it. One of the questions I had is how long can we sustain this? You know, it's tough getting people in here to come for one year, a one-year position, but he's talking maybe over a period of three to four years. So best-case scenario is we put a proposal together, a request explaining some of the rationale as to why we would need this. He takes it to the powers that be and hopefully, you know, we would be thankful for anything that we could possibly get out of this and utilize it. Even if it's one para or anything, we could utilize it in a manner that would be fruitful for the kiddos, which is number one. So I'm going to draft that tomorrow. I'm going to try to have some teachers do that as well, which he suggested. And I'll try to provide you guys updates from whatever I hear from Jim. So it's a great gesture on his part and I appreciated that, so.
Can I ask just a question?
Yeah.
So that's just one-time money that would need to last three to four years?
That I don't know.
Okay.
I, and maybe I'm speaking for myself, I got the indication that that would be money that we would get for, let's say it's a hundred thousand, we would get it, that hundred thousand for three or four years.
Oh, each year?
Yes.
Okay. So donated money like that would need to go into general funds?
Goes into the general fund, yep.
So does that cause an issue for our accountability for our general fund balance? I mean, just, I suppose if we're spending it down, it doesn't, but we just need to make sure.
It would be, it was the first thing I talked to Blaine about too this afternoon. And I don't know as if we got that deep in it, but it would be my understanding, it would be a wash.
Yeah, I don't, with what I've got, the information we've got right now, I think we'd be all right with that because our, the only problem we'd have to watch is for our cash balance. And that's based on total expenditures. So if we're expending the money, that would increase the allowable cash balance that we would have.
And it probably would depend on when we pay them too. If they're contracted, they're contracted to work. But if we paid them differently than what we would a regular para, that might play into it. You don't want to hear that because that'd be.
Yeah, I know.
But we would, let's put it this way, we're going to invite the money. I mean, if somebody's going to do a kind gesture and donate something, we're definitely going to make it work. Any other questions, Michelle? Okay. Student meals, Blaine, give me the number, how many meals did you tell me the other day? We.
We, the month of April, we sent out twenty-nine-hundred and some breakfast and roughly the same number of dinners.
So it's been, it's been good. We've had a lot of paras step up, our bus drivers have stepped up. So we deliver on Mondays, we deliver Monday's and Tuesday's meal. And then on Wednesday, we deliver for Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. So it takes a group effort, it's a lot of meals. We went from around a hundred and twenty-five, I think we're to about a.
Seventy-something.
Hundred and seventy-some meals right now. So the word got out and we're putting out a lot of, we're putting out a lot of meals. That will continue through the last week of school. So our last day of serving those meals will be May 20th, Wednesday, May 20th. So I also have on here SAC, SAC has been going strong as well. Becky Kraus has probably been my main contact with that. They have kept going throughout this entire thing too. We, they're delivering on Wednesdays and they are going to continue on like other years. They're going to continue to do this over the summer as well. So I've talked to someone else on the committee and told them that we would help with that, that whether it be paras, teachers or admin, we would step up and help with that over the summer. So that's a good thing, they've got the funding to do so. It's a good thing for those kids, so. I've talked to you a little bit about the start of school and it's probably the one thing that a number of people have had questions about. What is the start of school going to look like? I'll be honest with you, I don't know. That's, it's three months apart. The only direction that we've been given by the DOE is to possibly prepare to do distance learning. And you may have the option to make an alternative calendar. As I mentioned to you guys, I do not have plans to make an alternative calendar at this point. And if we have to start with e-learning, I think we're fine with that. I think there's some things that we would need to streamline and be on the same page about prior to the start of school. But I think we could, I think we can make that a go, we can make that a go easily. Cross your fingers, I hope we're not in that situation. We've talked about a number of things from bringing in, you know, similar to a college schedule where you're Monday, Wednesday, Friday with some kids and Tuesday, Thursday on the other. And I just don't know what that's going to look like come August. Either way, we got time to prepare for it and it changes every week. So I don't know. I'm good at saying I don't know, unfortunately. Custodians, I have given the green light to the custodians to start on summer cleaning. They are full steam ahead. They've got all of the carpets done, they've got quite a few, they've got the cafeteria, the commons, the high school. They've got a number of areas done already. So they're going to be flying, our two gymnasium floors were done by Hilliard. So this is the first year, I don't have any kids, trying to get into the gym for these two weeks. It's kind of nice. I told them to get them in here right away and get them done. So that'll be cured here in another week. And I'm hoping that the governor lifts the executive order here and we could maybe do some small group stuff. The coaches can get in here and do some small group stuff with kiddos in June and July. But again, I can't predict that. Next thing I have on, you should have a handout, everybody should have a handout. If you recall, Johnson Controls did a proposal for us in April of nineteen. So what you have in your possession here, you've got a brand-new proposal here. And then you've got another one that's titled number one. About halfway through that. The one that's titled number one, I crossed out the date, that was the April 2019 proposal that they had sent to us. Okay? And at that time, it was a hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven fifty-nine, sixty-four. Tom at Johnson Controls had some, as a result of the COVID, they had some new incentives out for school districts and was able to get that price down to one hundred and eight thousand. So a significant savings. He also put on here, if you take a look at your fourth page, which is called a PSA. So on the top of your fourth page where it's also got the quote that I've highlighted here, the one hundred eight thousand, he's got a preventative planned service agreement, which basically they come in, they will update the software for one year and provide upgrades to that, which was at the time before not a free service. So they are also putting that in there. I had him refresh me a little bit on the savings and we've talked about it. He said you will notice savings right after you put this in. He said what this will do is he will slow down or back, basically your air exchanges won't be running at night. So everything is going to be on a timer. He said you would, he goes, you would find out right now during this COVID thing, you could have shut down certain parts of your school and put them down to sixty-five degrees or sixty-two degrees and seen a pretty good savings because not everything's running manually. And he said, you know, it's up to every school district how you do it. But typically, a number of districts shut everything down about five o'clock. And I'm not saying shut everything down, but they, their temperatures go down. And you're saving considerably on that by having an automatic program where that goes down and things aren't running at full capacity 24/7. Similar to your households, if you have something that's on a timer for your heating and cooling. I asked him about turnaround. He said in the event that we were to approve this tonight, he would have everything up and running by the start of school. I was also quick to ask him if this was to go through at the June board meeting. He said we would probably be working some evenings when school starts. So I know this is something that I brought to you before. I know Jack has talked about this. It's something where you've got everything on a computer program. You can look at your computer and you can say, hey, Lynn Kindop's room down in the first grade room isn't functioning. And then it runs a diagnostic report for it and then you can troubleshoot all of those things. So from that standpoint, right now, if we have something that's not working, we got to call ANDOR. If it's something that our head maintenance, Jack, can't figure out, then we're, we have to call, we have to call ANDOR to. we have to call ANDOR to come in here and, and troubleshoot it and fix it. No, I'm not saying that's not going to happen with this particular thing, but it's more streamlined, and we, we can, we can play around with it, so it's, we know what the temperature is in each of these rooms and, like anything, like geothermal or anything like that, you're going to pay upfront for it, but over time, you're going to have a cost savings, because you're not using the energy.
Did he tell you, like, software updates? Is it like every year you pay for that? What's kind of going to be that yearly?
He said it depends on that, but he's, he gave the cost, he said it's about fifteen, one of them's fifteen hundred and the other one's twenty-five hundred. So, um, from what I can remember, the last time he said it, it didn't sound like there was an update every single year. And that's something I could, I could certainly ask him, I know there's going to be, with any computer, you're going to have an update of sort, but I don't know how frequently.
Okay.
You know any other districts that have, that are using it and kind of what their experience?
Johnson Controls has quite a few, I know Camby's, um, Camby's using it, they don't have the geothermal, but they're doing a boiler system, which would, which would be similar, so. I, I couldn't give you one, I think Brookings, Brookings had had one, that was one of our first questions too, who else has this? And he, he rattled off a, a number of schools, so, um, they're a reputable, very reputable firm. I would have no issues with that, so. Yeah, I, I think some of your newer construction, your newer construction would have it. I'll tell you right now, if we were to put a geothermal in right now, uh, it wouldn't be seventy-two units, we would have one central unit that would pipe everything around. But at the time, when we put this in in two thousand and five, I don't think that technology was there, so we had to put a separate unit in every single space. And as you guys know, as you see every month, we're paying, we're paying for the replacements of a new, of a new unit, because they've been running, heating and cooling nonstop for, for fifteen years, so. There's no way of getting out of our, our setup that we have, but from the maintenance troubleshooting side, this would, this would be wonderful.
Well, and I just think it's a no-brainer, because you're not going to be running things when they don't need to be, and you're going to save money there, and you're going to save wear and tear on here.
Correct. He was quick to say too, uh, if you're, he said a lot of secretaries run the program. So the tech, secretaries will take a look at the schedule and they'll go in and program this. So if they know there's a basketball game and it's twenty below zero, they're probably going to need a little heat that night. Or if you've got parent-teacher conferences, the secretary will keep things running until eight, nine o'clock at night, so. If it's that user-friendly, and I think, I think it would be a, a good thing. And Jack is, is very cognizant of, of the things that are going on in the evening, he could, he could do that as well.
Yeah, I guess I was pretty interested in it, uh, last time, and now you knock another fifteen thousand dollars off it. It's definitely a bonus, and like you said, the amount of times we see ANDOR repairs in the bills is, I mean, it's, it's monthly. This could take care of the some, from some of the preventative maintenance costs, I think that would be well worth it. I remember when he came and talked to us, uh, in the event of addition at some point, that wasn't going to be an issue, it'd be very easy to take what he puts in now and, uh, bring that together with any new construction too, so.
He did say one of, you know, we, you know, in the event of new construction, this, this particular unit could hold up to two hundred, two hundred, uh, units, uh, so we wouldn't even come close to that, even in the event that, that we build, we're at seventy, I think he had eighty, eighty-some in here, so we would be absolutely fine, um, to add something on this down the road. I know one of the things that we've kind of done here the last year or two is, okay, we're going to put this up because of a potential or possible building project, well, here we are again pushing that down the road, which is, which is fine, but at some point, we're going to need to start doing some of these things. And we have the money and capital out late to do so. So it would definitely be an upgrade to, to what we have.
Was this an item that you were going to put in the next budget anyways? I think we were talking about that, right?
It's, it's in there right now.
So we'd just move it up, basically?
Right.
I think we should move it up just so we can get it going before school starts.
Yeah, I would be in agreement.
Do you want possible action on that, Blaine? Considering the, uh?
Yes, we, we would need an action on that, we can put it down at, under item C and other business.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing I have on here is, um, ITC. I want to, I, I want to give a huge thank you to ITC, they, um, they provided internet to families, not only in our community, but the entire service area for, um, again, those families that didn't have Wi-Fi, and they did it at no cost to those families, so they really stepped up. I would, I would call with, you know, I sent them, we were fortunate, we didn't have a lot of families, but I, I maybe sent them ten or twelve, and they had it within a day or two, so it was, they were Johnny on the spot and helping out, and I know, I know the teachers appreciated as well as the families, so, um, a shout out to, to ITC. End of the year, I know Eric's going to talk a little bit about graduation and, and the, the senior scholarship night, I would assume. The only thing that I have here is I'm going to be doing an end-of-the-year Zoom meeting with, uh, the staff, where we hand out our years of service and teacher of the year and those things, so. Probably going to be doing that, that last week of school, so it seemed to go well when we had everybody on there the last time for that meeting, so. We will, we will still be doing those things, so. Uh, the last thing I had, if you take a look at that last handout I got for you, is, that's the graduating senior class, I got to looking at that PowerPoint that Leslie had, had handed out to me, and I know it's something that we talk about, uh, quite a bit, you know, where are our kids going? And of the thirty students here, and granted, they're self-identifying where they're going, you know, we've got almost fifty percent of our kids going to a tech school, almost forty percent going, uh, to a four-year college or university, and then obviously the military and the workforce, uh, picking up that remaining fourteen percent. But I've also laid out, uh, where they're going, you know, all but one of these kids, um, is, is, they're staying in state, which is good, they're staying in state, and, and hopefully we can keep them in state and, um, keep them coming back here, uh, to the communities as well, so. I thought it would be nice to you, I know it's, you see it on the slide, but it's a little bit easier to, to look at in a, in that format, so. That's all I've got. Any questions for Mr. Schirnbeck? And Mr. Bass?
All right, don't have a ton of stuff, uh, just a few things. I sent, I, I think you guys got the attachment, hopefully you did, I don't really want to read through all fifty names, but instead of doing a student of the month, what we decided to do in talking to the staff was, we did what we called the COVID outstanding online learners are cool, if you use the acronym, uh, for all those students that are doing, you know, exceptionally well during this closure. So what we did was we went back from the time things were closed, I had the teachers send me all the list of names of students that they thought were doing an excellent job, keeping up, showing up to Zoom meetings, um, you know, reaching out when they need help and things like that, so we compiled the list of all the names, we sent it back out and said, all right, is there anybody on here that, you know, maybe a kid's doing great in one class, but maybe not in another? And, uh, that's the list we came up with, so that'll be going in the paper. Uh, I have a whole bunch of gift certificates sitting in my office from Buffalo Wild Wings and August seventeenth, so I'm going to send all those out to the kids here towards the end of the year, once we, we got a bunch of packets sitting in the office right now for a bunch of things that got to get sent out, so. We're going to just throw those in there for those students, just kind of as a little pat on the back for thanks for all the hard work, and for the most part, all of our kids have done a good job, it's just that for some reason, these kids, um, stood out. Uh, so I hopefully had a chance to run through that list of names. Great group of kids, all of them have done well, so we've had a few kids that we've had to try to trace down and, and run and get after a little bit, but for the most part, things have been going very well in the high school. Graduation, uh, is set for Saturday, May sixteenth, as of now, um. The weather has, I don't know, if you look at the forecast yesterday, it's supposed to rain all day Saturday, if you look at the forecast this morning, it was fine. Now, if you look at the forecast again this evening, there's fifty percent chance of showers in the morning, the turning into thunderstorms later in the evening, I don't know. So, yeah, at one time, it was rain all weekend, and then kind of into Monday, like, maybe Monday would be good, but how feel, good would the field be? So, right now, the plan is to go Saturday at one o'clock out at the football field. We think everything should go off without a hitch, and hopefully the weather works out. The current plan in place is if the weather is bad, and we'll have to make a decision early enough, probably Thursday, Friday, just kind of, yeah, I, we'll have to, Mr. Schirnbeck and myself will talk about it, and try and make a decision early enough that if we have to bump it to Sunday, we'll bump it to Sunday, but, um, ideally, it would be great to get it done this weekend, if at all possible, I think, just to get it out of the way and, and get those kids down the road, and, you know, we do have some family members coming in, so, so far, things have gone pretty well. We did, we, I was a little worried that we weren't going to get our graduation diploma covers, but they showed up on Friday, which is good. They had been delayed a little bit, but we got them, so we're good to go, everything is set. As long as the weather works out, we'll be okay. Uh, we'll have the field set up, we'll have the parents on the track, uh, we're going to recognize our, the program will be fairly short, but we'll do a lot of the things that we usually do, we'll recognize our, um, South Dakota Opportunity Scholarship reward, uh, award recipients, we'll announce our board, our Regent Scholar recipients, uh, we'll announce our valedictorian, salutatorian, and then we'll have our presentation of, uh, the diplomas at that time. When those kids' names are called, the families are going to be allowed to come out, um, take pictures real quick, uh, and then we're going to, uh, move on from there, the parade will be after that. The parade's set about one-thirty in the paper, or the stuff, the information that went out, I more anticipate that by the time we get everybody moving and take some pictures and when it's done, it'll be closer to one-forty-five, two o'clock, so. Would rather have people there early than late, so. That's the plan as of now, hopefully things go well, the grandstand will be closed off, um, just to keep people, uh, from social distancing that way, so, so far, I've, I've wanted all the seniors to get back to me with how many members of their family are going to be there. Still missing four of them, but I'll, I'll get those down here in the next day or so, and then myself and Jack will go out to the track, and we'll just kind of set it up and see how it looks and the, the ways we're going to have it. So we'll have myself and Mr. Anderson handing out the diplomas, uh, two different spots, and we'll go from there, so. Should go pretty well.
So are the parents just supposed to stand on the track?
No, we'll have chairs, we're going to have chairs for you, yep, I'll, when I get everything organized, there's a, I have a list of the north end, south end, it's not going to be as extreme as it sounds, but, um, what we're going to do is we're going to, so for example, Justin, I think you guys have five people coming or four people, he'll need chairs for, I don't remember off the top of my head, but what we'll do is we'll have on that, that chairs, there'll be a group of chairs together, and it'll say for the family of Justin DeCroni, those will be your chairs, and they'll be on the end that he'll be at, so then he can, you can walk out when he gets his diploma, so. That's what we got to get figured out is how are those chairs, I think we're going to use lanes five and six and one and two, and just kind of stagger them, so we get enough space, that's just the, the trick of it right now, so. And then the kids will be on the field, like, you know where the runway is for the, like, long jump pits? They'll be just on the other side of that, um, and they'll be kind of spread out in an arc with our nice black chairs, and they'll be sitting out there, and when their name is called, they'll walk up, parents come out, take pictures. Uh, as they're taking those pictures, we'll do the other end, so it kind of moves a little bit, and then they have some time, they don't have to feel rushed, they have some time, so. Hope to practice with the seniors on Friday at noon, I got to send a reminder out, but we talked about that in our meeting the other night, so. Uh, we are going to put some, uh, when we're done with the meeting tonight, I'm going to set up all these tables in here for people to come in and drop cards and stuff off. Usually in the past, we've done that in the auxiliary gym, uh, where they've had a place where they can go in beforehand, put cards, drop gifts, uh, to all the seniors, but obviously because of the COVID closure, we're just going to set them up in here, I'll have some name tags, um, that will go on the tables, um, and then people from the community can come in and drop off any gifts that they may have for any of the seniors. Between eight and four tomorrow through Thursday, and then up till noon on Friday, uh, we have the seniors obviously hopefully coming in for practice, plus they need to return all of their Chromebooks, uh, so hopefully they can do that on Friday, and when they come in on Friday, they can just hopefully stop in here and pick everything up. So we should be set, uh, that way. We did do our academic awards banquet the other night, uh, Thursday night, um, I thought it went pretty well, uh, at least we didn't have any technical issues, uh, for the most part. The, we did get it up on the Facebook page, and it is on ITC's, um, I want to say you can go into the ITC, what's it called, On Demand, and you can watch it if you still want to see it, so we did, Miss Kuchal put a very nice PowerPoint together that is also up on our Facebook page and our school website, so. Uh, we'll do the same with graduation, once we get everything all compiled, we'll put all those things together, and we'll get it on those, uh, platforms as quickly as we can, so. Got to get a couple of things recorded this week, uh, for graduation speeches, and we should, uh, hopefully go well. That is really all I have at this point, I don't, um, schedules for next year, just going through and finalizing a lot of them, and should be good for next year. Uh, most of the ba, most of all the athletic schedules are set, just missing a few things, get taken care of in the fall. And then, uh, other than that, we should be, should be set, so.
Any questions for Mr. Bass? Mr. Ralph?
All right, like Mr. Bass, I don't have a whole lot, I do have middle school student of the months that were turned in to me on Friday. I have Addison Weisner, Marley Hunt, Natalie Hendrickson, Jackson Peterhines, Kayden Finneson, and Hope Birkey. Uh, these students are, again, those ones that worked really hard during the COVID closure, um, did some great online things, so. Kudos to those students, um, I did email the entire middle school group, just to let them know who received that at the, at the middle school level, and then I'll also send out their gift certificate to Buffalo Wild Wings and their T-shirts this coming week when I get them from Mr. Horgan. The other thing that I wanted to touch base on is that I am currently working on a slideshow for eighth grade, uh, celebrate their eighth grade graduation. That'll be handled a lot like the senior achievements were handled. Uh, it'll be posted out on the Facebook page, website, and then I'll email it to all of the eighth graders, as well as eighth grade parents. So that'll come out, excuse me, probably that last couple of days of this true school year, so. In that, it just, it's a picture of them, what types of things that they did throughout their eighth grade year, and I know it's not our big assembly that we have in the Cardinal Gym at the end of the year, but it's about the best that we can do at this point, so. You can be looking for that. Otherwise, I don't have anything else. We did wrap up a lot of the kids, May seventh, um, with that date. Of course, it's just like the high school, we have some kids that are a little ways behind. We've encouraged them to keep their Chromebooks, get some extra help from the teachers, now that they don't have maybe such a large caseload, so. I visited with a couple of teachers today, and they said that a few of them that they've had troubles connecting with actually got on today and worked in a one-on-one setting with them, so it's good, hopefully we can get kids as caught up as possible by the end of their normal school year, so.
Any questions for Todd? Blaine?
Okay, in front of you, you should have the capital out late list, um, and I'll warn you right up front that this is, is kind of preliminary, we know that a lot of this, uh, we've talked about already, most of the technology and that type of thing. Uh, normally, we have our requisitions due by the middle of April. Uh, after we talked about it a little bit, we had the teachers going full gun and, uh, with the online learning and kind of just backed off of that, they're, they're working on the requisitions right now. I think I've got those due the end of this week or first part of next week. And, uh, we'll be able to fill, fill in a few of these things, kind of what I did was went through it, normally doesn't change a whole lot year to year, just may go from one to the, one, uh, category to the other. If you look on the last page, it's up a little bit this year for twenty-twenty-one, uh, but we did add in the, uh, and add a hundred and twenty thousand in for the, uh, controls that we just had, and, uh, I do have some, uh, money set aside for a fourteen-passenger bus and something to replace one of our vans, sometime during the school year, so we'll be doing some work on that. I think there's only one question mark. I think there's only one question mark in there, and that's kind of on the elementary curriculum, textbooks, that type of thing. Talked with, with Todd the other day, and he didn't think that there was anything that was coming up. We'll kind of look at the requisitions when they, when they do get in. But I don't foresee that being anything drastic. High school has science coming up this year. Science and English are two of the worst ones when you start replacing textbooks, because they tend to be pretty, pretty spendy, but. Go ahead and take a look at that. Some of these things we'll, we're going to get started on. As far as a little more firm pricing, there's some of the things that we're going to have to get ordered in order to have them here in time for school. And I know Mr. Gering has a few things that he's, needs to get rolling on because of some, some special pricing deals that, that he can get before July 1, as long as it's ordered before July 1 and they bill it after that, so. Are there any questions on that? Realizing there's a lot there right now, but if you have any questions, just feel free to give me a call on it.
The Johnson controls, does that end up in here underneath the maintenance?
It'd be under the maintenance.
The 249, too?
2549, where did it go? 2542, 479, it would be on, my pages aren't numbered. Yeah, on about the sixth page.
Yeah, yeah, it just shows up under maintenance. I just want to make sure that it was under that. I think it's under equipment, is that?
Yeah, it's under equipment.
So, we can change that to 108 or, or leave it, or what do you do?
I may adjust that. I, I was kind of going off the other one. There may be some, a few other things if, if they happen to run into, so. We can change that to 108.
109?
Or 109, yeah.
Gotcha.
Go 110 and we'll take 10,000 off of it. And I will, I will warn you right up front that that is, is pretty preliminary. It could change. I don't, I don't see any great changes in, in dollar amounts, so. And the only other thing that I have on mine, unless there's other questions on the capital A requests, we will not have a school board election. Joel Brandt was the only person to file a petition as of 5:00 on Friday, so we will not have an election. There will be something formal in the, in one of the upcoming board meetings, because we have to publish that information anyways, so.
Any questions for Blaine? Okay, Michelle?
So, we had a virtual NESC meeting, April 20th. Most of us could hop on Zoom and a few others just needed to call in. Technology wasn't working for them, so had a few things on there to approve. We, the Core Management Services, which is our bus, our pool of bus drivers, where we get our alcohol and drug testing, we did approve that contract. There was no increase over last year in the rates for that. So, we approved the peer reading recovery at 50, or $5,545.85. We did hear word that Highmore Herald might be leaving with a verbal notification. We haven't had it in writing yet. SWWC, which is Behavior Services, we did approve the 102 days for $64,331. We had been looking for an academic evaluator at less than one FTE for part-time, and they did interview and hired Lucy Van Der Snick at .5 FTE halftime. So, we did approve that contract. We did also talk a lot about COVID-19, what they're doing with the teletherapy services. It was going pretty good, kind of like the feedback we've gotten here. There's a few parents that don't engage at all, so it's kind of tough when the parents aren't stepping up to help with that. But overall, it's been pretty successful. Their concern was the, the evaluations with the kids and how to be able to do that. But it's, you know, all schools are kind of going through those same concerns right now. The roofing project that we did approve, that's been started in Hayti, and they're looking at being done April-May timeframe. We did approve the center base rates for fiscal year 2021, and then did talk negotiations and did approve the salary changes with the COVID clause in there, which basically says if funding decreases, we have the right to renegotiate the salaries only. So, that's pretty much the gist of the meeting.
Moving to other business, the presentation of the 2020-2021 preliminary budget for consideration.
You should have a copy of the budget in front of you. I tried to have a copy of it the other day, I almost put on there very, very preliminary or extremely preliminary or not totally positive whatsoever, but. We, we struggled a little bit this year, simply because we don't know where the budget's going to end up. Staff is working on requisitions right now. I don't think there's any surprises that will be coming in on that. So, basically, I put this budget together with 0% increase in revenue, and I did build an increase in salaries into that. And just kind of a worst-case scenario. Thinking that maybe in June, we would find out a little bit more on what they're looking at as far as an increase in state aid. Today, we heard that the government may postpone that until September. We're only three months into our budget here in September, so it's, it's going to be a disaster one way or the other. This would look chat a little better again today, and after we found out the September thing, I think about the only thing a guy can do is approve a budget and amend it once we, we get some information, because this thing keeps changing, pretty much week by week. So, I think it, I think it's something we, we, I know superintendents have been crossed on the Department of Education, that there are timelines that we have to follow. One of them being, maybe we have to present a preliminary budget. We have to approve a final budget by the end of September. Well, if they hold on until September, they have the meeting, yeah, it's, it's just kind of one of those things that you make your best guess. It is about all that you do. So, I guess I'm not going to waste a lot of time going through this, because I think there's, there's going to be an extreme amount of changes, depending on what happens, but I think we have a good basis right here as far as having a budget put together.
Blaine, you want to flip the mic on?
Sorry about that. We have, we've got a good basis for the budget. Like I say, it's, it's going to have to be changed over time. By the time we approve it in August, at that time, we hope that we have it set up a little bit better. Wish I had better information for you, but we just don't have it this year, folks, so.
Can I just ask, so the, the revenue is pretty much the same as last year, then?
Revenue is going to be relatively the same as last year. The expenditures are up, I want to say in general fund, we're looking at about $400,000 out of, out of fund balance in the general fund, knowing that we're probably a little high on most of our expenditures, so.
Did you do like a straight percentage of increase on expenditures, or how did you go about that?
Basically, it's, it's things that we knew had to go up. Otherwise, it's a, pretty much the same expenditures as last year's budget.
So, is there an increase in salaries on here?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Percentage?
I, okay, yeah, I've got 2% built in.
Okay.
But that, I qualify that, that that's contingent on what happens with our funding, so. And hopefully, everybody understands that. I figured that that was, was probably about the, the worst-case scenario that, that we could have is high on expenditures, low on, on the revenue. And to be perfectly honest, I think 0% increase in, in state aid is going to be our best-case scenario right now.
So, this could be, you said we would amend this then at that time, once we know?
Once, once we get a handle on what's going to happen, then we can, we can amend it. I can change this at any time up until we do the publication in June for the hearing in July. We can make those adjustments, and you'll see those at the June meeting. Hopefully, we've got some, a little better information, but I'm not going to bet the farm on it either.
I think I'm going to have more information this Thursday, because last Thursday, some of this stuff was alluded to, but I don't think our Secretary of State knew the deadlines. Blaine's talking about May and the 1st of October, having the, having the budget finalized. So, when we're talking about the governor possibly moving that back, number one, after July 1, which means it would become law, and then number two, right before we have to validate or confirm our budget for the year, they kind of contradict each other. So, we're hoping we get some clarification as to what that looks like, because every school sitting here right now, probably having the same conversation tonight, we don't know, so it's tough to budget when you don't know. So, again, we're right back to, hopefully, we'll get a little, a little bit more insight, but some of it's going to, some of it's going to have to be what the governor, governor says in terms of having another, another change in law or granting us a waiver of some sort to, to do these changes.
And it looks like this has the pension fund where it's already been transferred to general funds, so that's part of your transfer in or out, maybe?
Yep, and, and that'll actually happen probably next month, Michelle.
Okay.
Is that everything you had, Blaine?
That's all I got.
Any other questions? Hey, move to, do you want to read that motion? A Blaine that you had on there.
A motion to approve the contract of Jordan Lichness as high school, middle school principal and special ed adminis, special education administrator for the 2021 school year to be amended following finalization of state funding.
Need a motion?
Second.
Jordan is, he's been in Custer for the last two years as the assistant principal and the athletic director. And he's got quite a bit of experience in the, in the teaching realm. He was actually in Harrisburg for a year, so he's got a very good understanding of customized learning, and he was actually in the customized part of the Harrisburg School. So, as again, that's one of our, our biggest things with our hiring process. You're cognizant of that, so he brings some experience. He brings a lot of experience to the, to this, obviously, being the athletic director. But we talked a lot. He wants to focus a little bit more on being the, the principal in the high school and middle school, which I totally, I totally agree with. And I think we need some, we need some direction, and this is nothing against Eric, but we need some, some uniform direction. We're combining some of those schedules this coming year. So, I think he's, he's a, he's a high-energy guy. You probably recognize the name. He's, his, his parents are both in education. Dad's longtime coach in Hamlin and Yankton. And his, his folks have moved back into the area, and he wants to be back into the area as well. So, I think he's going to be extremely well-liked by, by the kiddos and staff and, and well-respected. So, I think it's a good addition. We're looking forward, forward to, to him coming here.
Any questions?
Do we get to see any specifics of the contract, or?
Uh, yeah, as I mentioned in the text message yesterday, it's, he signed a one-year contract today. And as far as I'm concerned, if we want to leave it at a one-year contract or expand it to a two, it makes no difference to me. We can leave it as-is.
Is there compensation in that as well, or do we give visibility to that, or?
Uh, he does have his compensation listed on here. I'm starting him at $67,000. That's with two years' experience. As I also said in that text message, the other side of that is the athletic director piece. When this position came open, Todd expressed, expressed an interest. I think it's a, it's a, it's a tough fit to do middle school, high school, or, you know, even the, even the high school position and the, and the athletic director position is a lot. That position itself is, is a job within itself, so Todd will be taking that over. I think I've done it long enough, I can help Todd with that, as has, has Jordan, so.
So, is there any, he's, is there any adjustment to Todd's principal contract as a result of that?
His principal contract will remain the same. This is, these have gone back and forth over the years, but there's never been an increase in compensation. So, meaning, he may be elementary principal, middle school principal, or vice versa with the high school, high school, middle school, and we've never, we've never had a compensation or switched it for that. It's something we could certainly talk about, but he will be getting paid for athletic director as well, obviously.
Yeah. I don't know, I, I guess it's up to the board, I guess, if we think we're going to visit about that, or? I mean, it, I don't know, workload-wise, three less grades?
I think that's something that we can talk about during admin negotiations, because we haven't done those yet, just with the COVID.
That would probably be the time to do it. Look at comparable salaries.
No, that's kind of what we did when Eric took it over. And I think in between Eric's first and second year of being an athletic director, that was changed, the amount, I think. So, I think that would probably be the best time to do that, when we do the admin negotiations. I guess with the motion in, in front of us that Blaine read, any more discussion on Jordan's? All those in favor?
Aye.
And can you read the second one, Blaine?
Motion to accept the resignation of Carrie Visser as special ed paraprofessional at the end of the school year, and thank Mrs. Visser for her service to the school district.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Carrie's been with us, how long's she been with us? Probably, probably two or three years without looking. Carrie.
Carrie, uh, thank you for her service. She found a different position here in town. The one thing that, that Carrie did have, if you remember, is she was a, a diabetic aide for one of our two diab- with Destiny Thomas or possibly get another paratrein to, to do that and check uh those diabetic kids, which is a huge, uh, huge part of uh that position, so again, thanks, thanks for Carrie and wish her the best luck.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And you have the Johnson Controls one ready?
Yes, motion to approve the proposal of Johnson Controls for HVAC control system at a cost of one hundred eight thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars and sixty-nine cents for installation summer 2020.
Okay, need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Melody?
Okay, I think we already discussed this. Uh, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else? Need a motion to adjourn?
I just, I just had one question. Any thoughts as far as proceeding with the building committee in the next upcoming months? I mean, I just curious where we're, we're.
We've kind of left it on the back burner, I gu- I'm open to anything. Um, if that's something, I know times are unreal right now, but um, I, I would, I would be open to something if the board would want to open those talks back up. I, um, I, when I put, talked to you guys last time about putting it on the back burner for a while, I just kind of figured we would be putting it off for at least another, another year, at least until this fall. Uh, meaning that we, if we did build, it wouldn't be happening during the 2021, spring of 2021. But uh, again, I'm open to what you as a board uh would consider. Anybody have any comments on that at all?
I just, I just think, you know, just thinking potentially, are there things that could be moving forward, understanding that the actual project isn't, you know, is maybe a ways away, but are there things that could be done for the sake of time, you know, just in advance, so when things start to pick up again, we, we could have some things taken care of, you know, I guess that's the only, uh, maybe we can't answer that question tonight, but maybe it's something that, you know, if you guys want to discuss or, you know, between now and the next meeting, if you think there's some efficiencies that we could gain, some things that we need to look into, um, I don't know, possibly talk to the committee and see what their interest level is in meeting at this particular time, or if they would rather wait themselves or kind of where.
Yeah, and I had a lot of those, I had everybody lined up for that, so I would be I would suggest we talk about it as a board probably at the next meeting. And then we could, we can turn around and, and set up whether it be a special meeting or, I would prefer probably a special meeting, just we could focus on that too, so, just to get some feedback from them.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven thirty-three, thank you.